I would like to welcome everyone to the East Lime Board of Finance public hearing. Today is Monday, April 29th, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. And I'd like to thank the superintendent for having us here in the East Lime High School auditorium. I'd like to begin by calling the meeting to order and ask people who can to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of presentations tonight. First, I would like to welcome our first selectman. It's not, not, is that better? Okay. So we have a couple of presentations tonight. I'd like to start by welcoming our first selectman, Dan Cunningham, to come to the podium and walk through a couple of the key items of the budget.
Good evening, everybody. Whoa, holy cow. Hope I woke everyone up, so that's good. So I want to start by thanking everyone that's here tonight in the audience. You know, there's a lot of work that goes into all of this from everyone sitting at the table here, the Board of Selectmen, and so it's nice to see that there are people that are interested in the, in the hard work that it takes to put this together. So, so let me start again by thanking everyone here. I want to thank the Board of Finance for all of their hard work at all the meetings that we went to, late hours, and they really, you know, put a sincere diligent effort into this budget as did my other members of the Board of Selectmen that I serve with. So I want to thank all of those people for their time and their effort, and it's really to try to serve the benefit of the town. So let's start off by talking a little bit about what's the process? How do, how do we get here tonight? And it starts off with, you know, the department heads, they come to see the finance director. And by the way, I want to thank Kevin, I meant, it was on my note. Kevin, thank you for all your hard work. This wouldn't have happened without everything that you do. So thank you. But they come to see Kevin, they come to see me, and then we start talking about, you know, what are the wants? What would they like to see in their budget for the upcoming year? And so, you know, that's sort of a process that takes several weeks for everybody to come through and give us their hopeful budget. And then after meeting with the department heads, we really sit down, we have long conversations, and we say, look, you know, there's only so much that taxpayers can tolerate. We, we have to do the best we can, and, and let's look, you know, every, every line item, every aspect of your budget. There's certain things that we can't change, contractual obligations, debt service, but maybe there's some things that are, you know, what I call the wants over the needs that we can reduce or maybe eliminate. And that idea really became sort of the overarching theme as we got further into this budget process. Really tried to take, you know, there are a lot of things that people would want, different factions in the town have desire for, for some things that we could add, but you know, we can't be a country club. We want to serve the members of our town in the best way that we can. The most important parts are public safety, being responsible with expenses, and asking the department heads to, to where they can reduce some of the wants. So we end up with mostly the needs that we really can't change. So we go through that process, and then at the end of that, the first selectman proposes the budget to the full board and then the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen sits down, and we go through the process again. And they look at all of the reductions and changes that I made from what was the original amount that was asked for by the various department heads, and they make changes. Now, sometimes those changes are reductions. Actually, in this year, it ended up being an increase, but we'll, we'll get to that in a moment. So finally, after going through again the, the full budget with the Board of Selectmen and having some of the department heads come in and make their pitch and say, "Look, this is why you should, you know, Cunningham took this out of my budget. Maybe you should add this back into it. It's really, really important." So the department heads have that opportunity, and they come in. And then the Board of Selectmen makes their changes. And then at that point, once we've all agreed, we submit our budget, the Board of Selectmen budget, to the Board of Finance. And then the Board of Finance goes really through the same process all over again. They review each section of the budget. Maybe they'll ask for someone to come in and where there's a question to, you know, make their pitch for, you know, what should, changes that ought to be made. And finally, they come up with a budget that they pass, and that's where we are tonight. So we're at the public hearing on the budget that was agreed to and passed by the Board of Finance after it was received from the Board of Selectmen. So I said there were, you know, some initiatives and ideas and overarching ideas that we had in going through it. One of the, the big things and changes, and maybe controversial by some, was we needed to establish an East Lime Fire Service. I wanted to centralize the management of the fire service in East Lime. It's essential for the safety of our citizens. It isn't meant to be a slight to either of the volunteer departments, which we have great appreciation for and respect for, but it, it was a way to streamline and centralize certain expenses, things that have to be paid, maintenance on vehicles. We wanted that to be under the control of the Town of East Lime, someone that reports to me as the chief executive officer of the town. We wanted to make sure that they followed purchasing policies, bills would get paid on time. So, so we appointed, so we started in the budget to establish an East Lime Fire Service. So I appointed an interim or an acting chief and a deputy fire chief while we worked through this transition. The other thing we did was in the budget, we have an additional 11th firefighter that we hope things go through. We'll be able to hire an 11th firefighter to increase coverage, increase public safety. Pardon me? All right, I gotta. See if I can do this. Oh, can I go back? There we go. Okay. So having said all that, Fire Service, the next thing was we created the Youth and Family Services Commission, and as part of that, we hired a Youth and Family Services Director. They are engaged in wellness and prevention, monitoring, coordination. It's another service that we can offer the residents of the town. It's not comprehensive. We can't handle every person that may, you know, need their services, but it will work in conjunction and augment some of the services offered by the high school. And it's just another layer for mental health, for counseling, for families that need a place to turn to to get some advice. And we were able to do it, and it'll grow. It'll be a service that I think continues to be valued. We're hoping that they'll be able to use grants to help fund a lot of what they do. So an important aspect of improving our town and in improving how we take care, we take care of the citizens here. One of the things that I've become aware of and, and concerned about is cybersecurity. It's becoming an increasing, increasingly real threat, something we have to be concerned about. I went to a seminar the other day. We ran a scenario, a tabletop scenario about a cyber threat in a fictitious town, and we went through certain steps. What do we do at certain junctures? At what point do you start to perceive that there is a threat? So we do have an IT department, and we've added another IT engineer. And they'll be working with public safety and enhancing cybersecurity. So a very important function and aspect of what we do to try to protect the town and keep it safe. I think everybody knows that was down at McCooks that we had a problem with the wall that caved in several months ago after the storm. Times are changing. You know, tides are rising. Storms seem to be more severe. So we've established what they call a coastal resiliency fund. It's a fund that will put money aside so the next time we have an event, we'll have a, a pool to dig into, to pay for some of the damages. The other important aspect of that is trying to enhance what we look like when we go to borrow money in the bond market. And for coastal communities, it's one of the things that bond managers, they look at. And they want to see that we actually have started a coastal resiliency fund. It's not fully funded. It doesn't have all the money that we're going to need to handle some event, but it's a start, and if every year we can add to it, that makes us look a lot better in the eyes of people that want to loan us money. And that's important. You'll see, if you get into some of the details of the budget, what we pay for debt service. So to the extent that we can borrow money at a better rate, that reduces the amount of our debt service. So, you know, there's all these little elements here that are all moving in the same direction. And that direction is to enhance our, our fiscal posture years down the road, not just in this budget season, but let's start setting ourselves up so things get a little bit easier every year. So that's what the coastal resiliency fund is about. And there's something called the OPEB trust, that's Other Post-Employment Benefits. And so people retire, they're entitled to certain benefits, and you need to have money to pay out those benefits. So again, people in the bond market that want to loan us money, they want to see that we have an OPEB, what they call an OPEB trust. So we, again, we don't have the money to entirely fund the trust, but we have some money to get it started, to get it, some of the paperwork together, start organizing it so in the future, again, we'll look a little bit better to people that were asking to loan us money. One of the things that I really wanted to emphasize was maintaining what we have and not trying to buy more stuff. You know, it's just like at your home, you know, the more things you own, pretty soon it gets difficult to, gee, I gotta, I gotta winterize the snowmobile and take care of the boat and fix the lawnmower, and pretty soon there's so many things that you're responsible for, you can't quite keep up with it. Well, same thing in a town. It's just on a much grander scale. We have buildings, we have equipment, we have a lot of things that we have to keep running and moving, and the more you add to that load, the harder it is to take care of, of those items. So we wanted to make sure, and you'll see in the capital plan, there's certain buildings that need roofs, there's trucks that need to be replaced. We're trying to stretch the other vehicles as long as we can, but we want to make sure that we take care of what we already have and not add to our burden. If we can avoid purchasing another piece of equipment, if we can extend the life of something we already have, then we're in much better shape. Again, it's another little piece, but it all starts to add together, and it's kind of a synergy. After a while, if we start doing all these little things, maybe down the road it gets just a little bit easier for us here in East Lime. One of the things, you know, I took a tour of the Public Works, and I was really impressed. They have like a, a car wash inside, you know, for all the, all the town trucks, which are fabulously expensive for these town vehicles. But when they're, when they're through plowing or, you know, hauling salt or whatever it is, they have a car wash in there, and they're diligent about, you know, cleaning everything out and rinsing out the vehicles and getting the undercarriage, what you would do with your own car after a, you know, a salty day out on, on the highway. We're doing it here, and because of that, we're getting more life out of our vehicles than we would have otherwise. So I'm really happy to see that, and that's another little thing we're doing to make us a little more fiscally responsible down the road, make things a little easier. Finally, the last item is increasing software and office modernization. This ties back a little bit to the, you know, cybersecurity issue and efficiency and some of the programs that we have to use. We have to get payroll out. There's a lot of financial things that need to be done when you're running a municipality of any size. And we are migrating to a new accounting system and payroll system, and Kevin Gervais has been very busy with that, but we're starting to, to move forward on that. And there's phases that, you know, it takes years to implement a new system. But we're, we're doing that. We will, we will have much better software. It'll allow us to control expenses and see where money is going. So increasing software usage and office modernization is a very important aspect of this idea of trying to make us every little bit better that we can get for the next, for the next year. So with all of that, let's look at some numbers. And what we're really just going to look at is the general government part, and the Board of Finance will explain the other elements of the budget. But as you can see, the budget that was adopted in 2024, that's the $28,217,000. That's where we started off. Department heads, when they came in to see me, they came in at $31,821,000 and change. And through my conversations and reductions, we reduced it by 1.1 million. And so my budget that I proposed was $30,714,000. After meeting with the Board of Selectmen and listening to some of the department heads, there were some aspects of the budget that they may, thought maybe I went a little bit too far. So they added back $88,000 to the budget. And so that was the final budget from us that we submitted to the Board of Finance, Board of Finance did their due diligence. They did their deliberations, and they reduced it back down by $234,668. And so we ended up with a budget, at least for general government, of $30,568,319. So that was the general government work that we did, and that portion of the budget that we presented with the rest of the budget, which also includes, of course, the Board of Education. So that's where we ended up, and that's where we are tonight. And now I will, unless there are any questions for me, I'll turn it over to the Board of Finance for their presentation.
So first of all, one of the things I'd like to say is that we worked closely with the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed had lots of presentations themselves on their budget. We all sort of came together, and at a number of the Board of Finance meetings, the Board of Ed was there, and we worked through a lot of numbers together. And so tonight Eric Baumann, who is the Chair of the Board of Ed, he is out of town, so could not be here. But we felt like there was so much already out there on the Board of Ed's budget that another whole presentation probably would not be necessary. That being said, we do have the superintendent, Jeff Newton, here. So if later on there's any particular questions about the Board of Ed, we'll be able to answer them. So I would like to just introduce who we have up here. Paul Maxfield is the Vice Chair of the Board of Finance. Richard Steele, John Birmingham, and Jay Ginsburg are here with me tonight. Unfortunately, Lauren McDeMera is ill and wasn't able to come tonight, but I'm sure she'll be better soon. So as Dan said, it's a long process. We kind of moved through. We moved through a number of these things, and so what I wanted to go on with is what we did, the challenges, revenues, expenses, capital items, the mill rate, and then property tax calculations. So once we got the budget, it would have been a 6.88% increase, which could have been a mill rate of 26.83. We held seven meetings over the subsequent weeks, really trying to drill down to find anything that we could save. And, you know, while, while Dan had the overall theme of, you know, taking care of what we have and not, you know, wants and needs, I think we were out there just looking at every dollar, especially things like miscellaneous. You know, we, we don't like miscellaneous, so we got rid of a lot of that. But I, I would commend both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen for doing a lot of the hard work so that by the time the Board of Finance got the budget, it was in really good shape. So, you know, we worked to try to find things, but we, we really could not find a whole lot of stuff that we wanted to get rid of. So we, our overall reduction to the increase of $1,334,668 would have brought the mill rate to 26.35. So once we get through with tonight's hearing, and if people have questions or whatever, we take all of that into consideration. We will have a special meeting after tonight to adopt the final budget. After that, it will go to town meeting at, on May 13th at 7:00 PM, and then it will go to referendum on May 23rd. So, you know, Dan talks about the things that he wants to do with the town. The Board of Finance is not the policymaking body. We look to see, you know, how do we, how do we pay for things? And how do we, you know, make sure we're in good financial shape? So what we try to do is make sure we have a healthy rainy day fund, which is referred to as the undesignated fund balance. We updated our fund balance policy this past year. It hadn't been updated in a while. And one of the things that we put in there is that we're going to strive to maintain 17% of the general fund in that rainy day fund. That's something that we arrived at based upon a Connecticut Conference of Municipalities put out a risk analysis template for towns to go through and check off, what are all the different risk items that your town is exposed to? One of them would be, are you on the coast? And could you end up in a situation where you had a huge public works event driven by the fact that you're on the coast? So we went through that whole risk analysis, and that 17% was what the CCM recommended. So we put it as, this is what we're going to strive to get to, but we didn't make it a hard and fast, because you don't want to set yourself up for failure either. So it is that rainy day fund that, just by the nature of the budget, every year with inflation and contractual increases that we don't have control over, the budget gets bigger and bigger, and thus the required undesignated fund balance grows too. So this is the balancing act that the Board of Finance looks at, is, you know, how much can we afford to have just sitting there as a rainy day fund and keep adding to it without putting undue stress on our residents and the taxes that they pay? So it, it really is such a balancing act that we, we try to take everybody into consideration and hope that if we do have some incident that calls for usage of the rainy day, that we have the funds there to meet it. So the other thing we want to do is reduce bonded debt. Especially as rates went up and we go, go to market with our debt, it's going to cost more this year than it did last year. We are thinking that rates are going to stay higher longer based upon a lot of the inflationary data that's come out. It's making it harder for the Fed to lower rates like it would like to. We would like to borrow less money. It's one of those fiscal indicators that the agencies, S and P and Moody's, look at. So that's what we would like to do, and if we could do a number of these different things to improve our fiscal indicators, then that could lead the rating agencies to upgrade, which then would allow us to sell our debt at a lower interest rate than, than a town that has a, you know, a worse rating from the agencies. So that and limiting the burden on our taxpayers is what we try to do. Some of the, the budgetary challenges, we do have more debt than we would like, and we'll be issuing more debt, and it's going to be even higher, at an even higher rate. We have a pension that is very well-funded, I'm very thankful to say. But as we look out into the future, working with our actuaries over the next five years, the amount that we're going to have to contribute to the pension plan for our retirees is going to go up significantly. So we need to be prepared to put even more money, you know, maybe it's $500,000 one year, over the, over the next five years, it could be $2 million. So we need to keep staying on top of funding the pension. And then as, as I talked about with the undesignated fund balance, when we use the funds that are in the undesignated fund balance to help reduce people's taxes, you know, we have to be careful whether there were one-time sources of revenue that allowed us to have that extra funds. So last year, we had a, a number of properties that were sold at auction through, through, you know, foreclosed on and sold at auction, and so we had quite a, quite a few dollars that came in. Those are one-time sources of funds, so we need to be careful that we don't keep counting on one-time sources of funds. So, you know, right now, our projected fund balance as of June 30, 2024, based on this budget, would be 10 and a half million or 12 and a half percent. So this kind of concerns me because our, that percentage has gone down over the last couple of years, because we have used a portion of that undesignated fund balance. So it's a concern. We are using some, but I'm, I really don't want to use more from that undesignated fund balance, because that is our rainy day fund that's there to protect our town in, in case of need. And, you know, this doesn't have anything to do with East Lime, but I used to live in West Hartford, and, and back years ago, we had that crazy Halloween storm, and all the leaves were still on the trees, and we had heavy, heavy snow, and so many trees were down. The town was out of power for a month. We had, we had to do so much to clear all the roads. You had two football fields full of debris from the roads. So I think I'm just especially concerned about use of fund balance because I sat on a town council when we were faced with an extraordinary weather event that costs so much money. Now, a lot of it FEMA may reimburse, but it could take a year. So that's, that's why we put so much emphasis on this undesignated fund balance and hoping to not dip into it too much. Okay, it doesn't want to move forward. I think our IT man up there maybe. But it seems like it, yeah, I think it's frozen. Did I do something? Okay. Sorry. I don't know what happened there. So, you can tell I'm a finance person and not an IT person. So, the proposed revenues, because this is what, you know, we have to look at, revenues as well as the expenses, based on this budget would be a total increase of 5.33%. So, as you can see from these different line items, some of the more notable was the increase in licenses and permits, a lot of that. There's a lot of building going on in town, so you have to get permits for all the different buildings. So, we're budgeting for an even higher amount than last year. Investment earnings is another, that was a huge 92% increase because what happens with the town, when you get your tax bill, all that money comes flying in in January and July. So, the town has all that money, and it can put it out in short-term investments. And then, you know, take the money back out as we need to pay salaries and pay for everything else. So, for that long 10-year period when interest rates are at .10, there was very little money to be made by the town with their tax funds that came in twice a year. So, now, when the rates went up quite a bit, we budgeted conservatively last year, but we took in quite a bit more than we even thought we would. We started this year thinking, oh, the Fed's going to cut rates, we're going to earn less. But over the last couple of meetings by the FOMC, they're having a hard time fighting inflation. So, we think that we may be able to achieve that greater interest rate closer to what we did last year. So, overall, we're looking at revenues of 4.5 million more than we took in last year. So, for our proposed expenses, you can see how this breaks out with general government that Dan went over, and then the Board of Ed budget, which went up by 3.87%. Again, I really want to commend the Board of Ed for that increase. If people read the papers and see what's been some of the other towns have been struggling with, with their Board of Ed budgets, this was very much appreciated when we got this. A lot of the other towns had problems because there was so much money that came in from the federal government dealing with COVID. And depending on how those towns put that money to use, if they put it to use hiring permanent positions, and then the grant runs out, then they're in a bad situation because the grant money isn't there anymore, but now they've got these positions that they need to pay for. So, Board of Ed was very circumspect in how they used the grant funds that came in, and now, as they run out, we're not in that same position as a lot of the other towns. The other thing that we're sort of making some changes with, with Kevin Gervais' input, is how we borrow money. And what we like to do is limit the amount of money we borrow and try instead to use cash coming in. There's certain things that, ways of borrowing, we used to do a lot of leasing. We're just trying to make things a lot simpler, use cash when we can instead of incurring debt. And so, we're in a little bit of a transition phase to be more prudent with how much debt we issue, which gets back to one of those budgetary goals of issuing less debt. So, the total operating budget would increase by 5.33%. As you can see here, these were the capital projects that were laid out, and I just want to talk about a couple of the big items that go into this. So, the Board of Ed had a couple of big things. This gets back to wants and needs. Lily Bay Haynes School needs a new roof, so that would be about 4.3 million. The Aquatic Center, we had a tour of this whole facility, and it was actually my first time in the Aquatic Center. And the ceiling is, you know, a big problem, and things were falling from it. So, this is really a safety issue. The Public Works is a big, you know, this is what we do in town. And everything is just more expensive with inflation, the costs of the garbage trucks, the cost of fire trucks, everything has just gone up. I'm sure everybody sees what happens in their own households and how inflation has really been an impact on them. But these are the things that we really need to do, to take care of what we have. The East Lime Community Center also has issues with its roof. That was about 1.4 million. So, not everything got passed in the capital project budget for this year. You know, we tried to really focus on what really has to be done. We looked originally after the issue with the McCooks Wall there. First, we thought, oh, we've got to spend 400,000, and that's going to be borrowing for that to fix that. But then we really kind of dug down and said, do we need to do, is there a way we can shore up the wall and not have to incur the 400,000 this year? So, working with the Public Works, they came up with another solution, and they've, for 25,000. So, those are the things that we keep working on to try to limit what happens to our residents. So, here's your total operating budget summary. It shows the expenditures by the town operations, the Board of Ed, debt service, and capital. So, that would be an increase of 5.33%, and then you can back into the revenues, and how much we would need to raise in taxes to pay for those expenditures. So, if this budget is adopted, as is tonight, what this would mean is a mill rate of 26.35, which is a 1.48 mill rate increase, or a change of 5.95% from last year. So, if you're looking at what would this mean for my taxes based upon, here's a representative home values, and what it would mean for yearly increases or monthly increases. So, I know those are a lot of numbers to take in. I just want to assure everybody that we really tried our best to minimize the impact on our residences while taking into account that there were things that really needed to be done in town. And focusing on public safety, especially with the reorganization of the fire department, was really key. And taking care of our residents, the creation of that Youth and Family Services Department, we felt would provide needed services to a lot of the people in town. You read about how COVID really impacted our youth, and all of the issues that they've been struggling with over the last couple of years. And one of our hopes is that by having this department would actually be more coordinated. Instead of having little pockets of activity in parks and rec, and in Board of Ed, and at the town, and at the senior center, having a focused department looking at this, we hope will mean we provide better services to our residents, you know, throughout the town, while minimizing how much we spend doing it. So, that was really, I think, our theme throughout our departmental meetings, you know, where they wanted to spend money on software, we were asking, well, what kind of efficiencies are you going to realize by doing this? Or if they were looking at spending money on something, did we really need to spend it this year? I've also been encouraged by the amount of interaction with our surrounding towns and trying to find ways that we can be more efficient and helping each other out. So, we're seeing a little bit more of that. I hope we can continue with that because that makes sense for all of us. You know, one of the things you always hear about is there's 169 towns in Connecticut, and how inefficient is that when we're duplicating all of these things over and over? Well, it's really hard due to union contracts to just say, oh, we're going to go somewhere else, or we're going to turn over our services to some other town. But where there's opportunity to work together with our neighbors and help to reduce costs, that's what we're looking at too. So, that brings me to the end of my part of the presentation. And so, what we'd like to do next is, find my paperwork, is open up, let me find my... So, next on the agenda is public discussion. So, this is where anyone in the public has an opportunity to come up, ask any questions, or just share a comment. I would ask, you know, that you keep it to three minutes, but if that's a problem, let me know. Come on up. There's a microphone right here.
And when you get to the microphone, if you could just state your name and your address, please?
Evening. Name is Mike Schultz, Lover's Lane, East Lime. I thank you folks for your dedicated service to the town, both the Board of Finance and the Board of Education. But I would be remiss if I didn't pass on information that I have received from others in town, that people that I know, because they too are concerned about the 4.5 million dollar increase. It seems that every year, we're saying that the budget increases are not sustainable. But yet, they always do pass at referendum. And I'm not sure that that's necessarily because of low turnout, or that people just don't care, or that the majority of the people have got the kind of money that is being requested. You know, as an example, if we look at the property tax calculation, that only includes property. It doesn't include vehicles, businesses, other taxes that we are burdened with on top of these things. So, and that number of dollars is considerable. So, it's not quite as simple as just putting it on a property tax calculation. And I think that I do appreciate the budget that's here. It's, it looks like some of the revenues that we got from interest kind of cancels out what the increase is, and that's great. But a few things I'd just like to point out, and I don't mean disrespect to anyone, it's just some of the facts. By contracts, unionized employee compensation increases always far surpasses the tax liability, the increase of that. Compensation increases in fiscal year 2023 and 2024 were as high as $11,000, plus benefits. That's a lot of compensation increase when 75% of the population doesn't get near that. And most of the retired people, because of all the increases that you too have brought out, are losing ground, were not gaining. The, I'd like to just mention that so your people are aware that a single individual's health insurance for the town is about $11,000 premium cost for the individual. Family plan is about $30,000. This is quality documented cost. And the taxpayer picks up more than 80% of that. So, and I, you know, I'm not suggesting that compensation increases aren't valid, or that health insurance should not be provided. But I am emphasizing that a closer look into the contracts, the contract details, not now at budget time, because it's too late, and into the health insurance component be reviewed with taxpayer input to facilitate potential savings to the taxpayer. Because there's a lot, there's information that other people would have, that they could provide to the boards for discussion, and hopefully for some savings. And lastly, a note I picked out is that it was stated by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, which we are members of, and I'll quote, "Affordable housing does not exist without affordable property tax." Affordable housing does not exist without affordable property tax. And I don't think our property tax is heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Is this thing working okay?
Yep.
First, thank all of you for your dedicated work and effort. I know how hard it is to pour over these figures and manipulate them and move them left and right.
Could you just state your name and address, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. That was at the top of my sheet. I haven't even gotten there yet. I was too busy with the thank yous. My name is Barry Shuckley. I live here in Niantic. I'd like to make tonight three points about the School of Education budget. First, through its budget process, the Board of Education has diverted taxpayers' attention away from the BOE's full $60 million budget request to focus on a marginal portion of this large budget. Rather than focusing on just this incremental increase, discussion of the BOE budget should focus on the full budget and the results achieved in terms of students' growth and development that will result from this $6 million investment. development that will result from this $6 million investment. We taxpayers would like to know if we're getting our money's worth. Second, the newly revised town charter requires that all tax-supported agencies in the town, including the Board of Education, serve the best interest of Eastline taxpayers by providing services that are effective and efficient. I'm wondering, where is the evidence for effectiveness in the BOE budget proposal? $60 million provides the BOE with enough resources to be one of the best-in-class school systems in the state. Where is the best-in-class evidence? By contrast, consider the best-in-class accomplishments of a small high school just to our east. Over 80,000 teams in the worldwide, in the world, compete in a robust STEM educational process called robotics. Fewer than 1% of these teams qualify for the Robotics Super Bowl, a competition among the very best teams in the world. Even though this small team, this small school to our east has a fraction of the resources Eastline benefits from, a team of students from this small school qualified for and competed in the worldwide competition last week as one of the best robotics teams in the world. Where in the budget proposal is similar best-in-world or best-in-class achievements that will result from taxpayers' $60 million investment in Eastline public schools? Where is the evidence in the budget proposal for Eastline students' growth and development? Following the Every Student Succeeds Act, Eastline tracks every student's yearly growth in terms of progress toward achieving their individualized growth target, a target often referred to as achieving one year of academic growth for one year of education. On the average, Eastline students fall far short of their respective growth targets. They achieve, they achieve far less than one year of academic growth for one year of education. This is not a very good return on a $60 million investment by taxpayers. What can be done? I suggest that we support this year's BOE budget request. We've gone too far down the road to do otherwise. In return, the BOE would agree to bring a budget proposal to taxpayers next year that shows what we taxpayers are getting in terms of students' growth and development in return for our $60 million investment. Here is one example of the many ways the BOE could provide this evidence. Each year, the BOE approves improvement plans for each school. Next year, the BOE could use these improvement plans to publicly document how taxpayers' $60 million investment led to improvements that resulted in students' growth and achievement. If the BOE cannot provide this or related evidence, cannot show the return on taxpayers' $60 million investment in terms of students' growth and development, the taxpayer should not approve next year's budget. We taxpayers want a school system distinguished by educational effectiveness, not just administrative efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak? Thank you. And if you could state your name and address?
Patty Murphy, Cedar Brook Lane. I just have a question. So some of what's been approved by the zoning commission, some of these projects like down on, by Baptist Lane and over by Bridebrook, can you just tell me like what kind of revenue that generates for the town? That's just something I don't understand. Does it generate anything and if it does, what, how much is that?
So that's a much larger question than what we have available to us right here. I'm wondering, so you have tax revenue, of course, from whoever owns the property. One of the things that we saw through, when we did the, every five years, you have to do assessments and we had to do that right in the midst of COVID. What we saw was that a lot of commercial properties went down and a lot of individual residential home properties went up. So there was a shift to the tax base overall. When you put up a development, a lot of what happens there besides the tax revenue is, you know, what is the expense that the town then occurs? So if you're building something where there wasn't anything before, then there's going to be, you know, roads that are built, you know, all of, you'll have children in schools. So there are expenses associated with it all. But if you want to ask specific information on a particular property and what tax revenue they're generating, we would have to get the tax assessor to answer those questions. But it is a, I'm sorry, could you come to the...
Yes, yes. Patty Murphy, 39 Cedar Brook Lane. So some of them are rental units. So how does, that's, that's just a question. If I need to ask the tax assessor, I can do that.
So the rental unit, somebody would own the apartment building?
Right, right.
So they would be the ones that would be paying the taxes on the property?
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Hi, David Behr, 34 Parker Drive. One question, just for clarification and then maybe two requests. So the first question was, on the proposed expenses slide, it says that the public safety budget has gone down by 22.7%. But I know obviously it's something we've been talking about is establishing the townwide fire departments. So I was just wondering if that's gone down by 22%, but we're obviously making big investments in that, which I think is the right thing to do. That just seemed odd that that goes down when it's something we're investing in. So I was just wondering if it's possible to clarify that?
Well, the public safety, do you want to, Kevin, since you've got the, so public safety is made up, you know, of police and fire and fire marshal. There's also, I'll let you.
As it was presented here.
Yep.
So thank you, Mr. Behr, for finding my error in live time. So as that, as that PowerPoint slide popped up, I noticed that as well. And I looked at it. The Eastline Fire Service, since it was a new entity, I miscoded that into the general government slide. So general government, the slide to the left, fiscal 24 is correct, proposed 25, under general government, instead of 11,953, that number is 9.9 million, up 4.4%. Public safety is 6.3 million, up 11%. So those numbers are, they did stick out to me when she presented them and it didn't get past my proof. So that, my apologies there on that one.
Oh, thanks, Kevin. I appreciate that. And then I just had two quick asks. One is, is there a projection for funding the pension fund over the next sort of five to 10 years? You said that was obviously a concern, that it might be 500,000 one year, a million another year and so on, and that's obviously going to go up. I just wondered if those projections are available somewhere, if they could be perhaps made public? And then the second one was, you said around...
Why don't I address that one and then go on to the next?
Yeah, of course.
So one of the things our finance department has been doing is posting all of the different, you know, financial budget and stuff online. We do hire an actuary who provides us with those projections and we can get that posted online as well, maybe a separate column under pension. I do serve on the pension board as well, so I see them all the time. But I, I think it's a great idea for other people to see it. So thank you for asking that question and we'll get that done.
Thank you. And then one other quick one along similar lines, the undesignated fund balance, you had a concern that that's kind of going down.
Yep.
I wonder whether it's possible perhaps to put a graph on the website that just shows what the change has been over perhaps the last five or 10 years and then perhaps what you project that to be?
Yeah, so we...
Thank you.
So, no, I think, yep, did you hand them it? So just for, for the rest of the audience, so from 2018, the fund balance was at 10.06%. It grew for a couple of years, 10%, 13%, 16%. The unaudited but draft 2022 was up to 17.92%. And then projected 2023 was 14.89% and projected 2024, 12.51%. So it has come down these last few months. The overall fund balance, you know, didn't drop the dollar amount that much. So we're projected to still have 10,567,000 in that rainy day fund. But, but it has dropped percentage-wise because as the budget goes up each year, we require more to go into it. Is there anyone else who'd like to make any comments? And I, while he's coming up, I just want to thank everybody for their good questions and I'm very thankful that you're all here to hear about the budget.
Yeah, John Drabich, 18 Drabich Road. Family's been in town 104 years, in business for 104 years, either milk and cows are playing with the golf course. Your budget, projections, and I've been saying it for the past 10 years, are unsustainable. Our bond rating ain't the greatest. I was on the Board of Finance 30 years ago, we were AAA. It was nothing to brag about then. What we have now certainly isn't anything to brag about. Bond ratings are based on people's ability to pay higher debt, not really what you folks have in the background of which your projections are and how closely you all work with each So much I wanted to say, I couldn't put it all together in one night and I left my damn pen home. The, I notice on the town website, you're looking for a contractor to install pipes for Public Works, set catch bases, et cetera, looking for a per-unit basis. Now 10 years ago, we said we're going to buy all this equipment. We bought backhoes, excavators, rollers, dozers, all kinds of stuff to do all this work because we're going to do it in-house and save money. And now you're still going outside to find it done outside because outside is more efficient. So I'm going to ask you all, instead of just doing the budget year after year, and I'll get into what the Board of Finance is supposed to be doing with this budget, we privatize a few things. We look into privatizing the trash, we look into privatizing the water department and making some changes. Because all we do is we come in, do the budget, it dribbles through a referendum and it comes out and everybody goes home. We're not looking much towards the future here. It really is sad. Way back, and I'm not going to pat myself on the back, 30 years ago, I said the town should be leasing some of this equipment, particularly the trucks. At least, somebody else maintains them. It took 10 years and then they started doing it. I'm kind of proud of that. But now everybody calls you up and says, how come everybody in town is driving a brand new pickup truck with chrome rims? That gets on my nerves. It's not the way it's supposed to be. Talk about balancing the budget for the past, since I was on the board, the budget's always been balanced on the back of the taxpayer. You put up a thing like the screen like you had before, the average house cost is, it only costs you a cup of Starbucks coffee for the increase. That's crap. It's almost offensive. People that run a business in this town like to stay in this town, it amounts to a lot more than a cup of stinking coffee at Starbucks, believe me. I graduated out of this school barely in 1972. I look at all my classmates, we're pushing 70, they got grandkids, great-grandkids. Hey, a lot of them say, yeah, we bought a house here, can't afford to stay here. So have we really done our jobs? If that's the case, these people invested their time and their tax money in this town and this is what they get? No. And I'm not going to address the Board of Ed budget because we can't bifurcate in this town. We look at the bottom line. You work closely with this group, that group, fine. Here we are in the final hours of the budget, suddenly you come to the taxpayer who puts the bill and now in 10 minutes you're going to make a decision where you're going to reduce the budget on it? No. No. Board of Finance's job isn't to sit there and do the stinking budget. It's pretty clear in the charter, the selectmen do the budget. They take care of personnel issues, that's it. Your job is to listen to the taxpayer. You could have held a public hearing back in January, you could have held one back last July. Doesn't mean you got to do it right in the last 10 seconds and get the public's mood. Now everybody, we've all suffered with COVID. We're getting out of it, hopefully, but we've all suffered with it as taxpayers. Keep talking about maintaining this and maintaining that, well, maybe you have too much to maintain. I want to see some privatization going on. I don't care if you privatize the schools, which may be a bad idea. So you got to think of the people who are actually paid the bills in these towns. We're not an afterthought, which comes to us in the last 10 minutes of stinking public hearing. I think that's pretty offensive. And I'll quit while I might not be ahead. Thank you.
My name is Betsy Getch and I live at 18 Hillwood Drive. And I have been to most of the finance meetings and I haven't seen any of you there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make any comments? No? Okay, so on to board comments. Do I have anyone on the Board of Finance that wanted to make any comments? Nope? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.